Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of January 28th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilmember Vall.
Present.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Councilmember Montoya.
Here.
Councilmember Grant.
Here.
Councilmember Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Hinkle.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Dixon.
Here.
Mayor Heikle.
I am here. Will, will you come down and join and start us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. First item on the agenda is Proclamations. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of February 2025 as Black History Month in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. "A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the month of February 2025 as Black History Month in the city of Norman. Whereas since its origin in 1926 by the father of black history, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, in his pursuit to raise awareness of African Americans' contributions to civilization, Black History Week began and evolved into Black History Month. And whereas 2025's national theme, African Americans and Labor focuses on the various and profound ways that work and working of all kinds intersect with the collective experiences of black people and is at the center of black history and culture. And whereas the Urban League of the Greater Oklahoma City continues to be a principal advocate to offer the total community of Oklahoma with systems that provide opportunities for workforce and career development for over 75 years. And whereas the Alliance of Black Employees, City of Norman Employee Resource Group, established in 2021, also provides support and representation to the black community in Norman while providing non-black communities with an opportunity to learn the black experience, to better understand diverse perspectives. And whereas the Norman Human Rights Commission continues to work to dispel prejudice and discrimination and to advance fairness, mutual understanding, and appreciation for the worth of all people. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2025 as Black History Month in the city of Norman and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating the diversity and character of our community." I'd like to recognize Dr. Wesley Long to become the OU Human Relations Department Chair. And Dr. Henderson, would you like to come up and you and your wife? Ms. Henderson? Would you like to say something, sir? Oh, one more picture.
When Barbara and I came to Norman in 1967, I brought with me the memories of my conversation with Martin Luther King Jr., my mentor. I got involved in the late 1950s in the civil rights movement, and I was frustrated. Things were not progressing as fast as I wanted them to. And I didn't think that I would end up with very much of anything. And Martin said, "George, what we are about is not about us. It's about the next generation of us." Norman, therefore, thanks to Barbara Henderson, who would not leave, said that we came and we leave when we're ready to leave. And this will be our pledge to ourselves and to our children. It is a privilege and honor to see the progress in Norman. Of course, as Martin would say, we ain't what we want to be. We ain't what we ought to be. We ain't what we gonna be. But thank God, we're not what we were. That's my Norman. We've tried to instill in our children and our friends and our colleagues the belief that there is a Norman, Oklahoma dream, that all people will have equal rights and dignities. We've worked hard to try to achieve that. I'm proud of people like Dr. Long. I'm proud of all of the other individuals who've been able to do the work. What we've sacrificed is well worth it. Barbara's mother and my mother died here in Norman because, as they said, this is their place too. We've lost five of our seven children, and all of them loved Norman, Oklahoma. We have not much else to give but ourselves. Who would have thought of all of the places that we could have gone, Barbara? And you said, "This is the place." I think she listens to God because I believe this was my calling. This is your calling. We have a responsibility, you and I, for the next generation of us and the next generation. When I was a child, we sang, "Hold on just a little bit longer and my change will come." I've been holding on just a little bit longer in Norman, and I realize now that my change will come soon. But the next generation will carry on. There's no way to thank you for things that you have or have done in my due. But I will tell you, because of who you are and what you do, what I tell all of my students, I don't know you, but I love you. This should be the city of love. This should be the city of acceptance. This should be the city of respect. Yeah, this is my dream, my Norman dream. Thank you.
I hear you, sir. Now's the time for council announcements. I'll start at Ward Eight.
Absolutely zero announcements after that.
Sir?
Would just like to thank Dr. Henderson for everything that he and his family have done in Norman for the last 70 years to try to make our city a better place for everybody. Also want to thank our emergency responders for their work today in Ward Seven and around the campus apprehending the vehicle theft suspect and his companions, leading the police on a chase out of Noble and through Norman, running through the woods and the creek. And my whole neighborhood and Madison Elementary and the university were on lockdown and helicopters were flying over for hours. And finally gave up and they got him. So I appreciate all the work that they, everybody that responded to that situation put into that effort. And everybody walked away and nobody was injured or harmed, no residents, no police officers, and the suspect was not either. So thank you for that. And then also, just a few things, there is a police academy graduation on Thursday at 2:00 PM. And then the chili supper benefit, which I don't think we'll be able to, most of us won't be able to go to, or I guess me and Larry won't be able to go to because we'll be at the forums. So, but that's going on at Norman High Thursday afternoon. And then wanted to remind everybody that last Thursday, we had the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting, and it's available to watch on the city YouTube channel. We discussed November and December's public transit ridership reports. Ridership on public transit continues to grow exponentially on almost all of the routes, and the system as a whole, a significant increase this year over last year in ridership. But we have that discussion every month. We talk about upcoming projects, transportation projects, road projects. We had a pretty lengthy discussion about the proposed 48th Avenue West Road Diet between Main Street and Robinson. I know Council Member Montoya and Mayor Heikle have been talking to residents over there about that proposed project. And if that is of interest to you, if you'd like to know more details about that proposal, that is also available to watch in the Community Planning and Transportation Committee meeting from last Thursday. I think there's, we're still gathering feedback from residents, and that item should come back to the committee maybe next month or so for further discussion before a decision is made on whether to do it or not. So let us know your opinions about that. Feel free to contact any of us, and we'll take all of that into consideration before we make a decision. And then just would note also that early voting starts next Thursday and Friday for City Council Wards One, Three, Five, and Seven, and Mayor. So if you live in those wards, I absolutely encourage you to consider voting early or voting on Election Day on February 11th. Be sure to exercise your right to vote. As many of us have talked about before, a lot of our city elections can be decided by very few votes, by less than 100 votes in two of our races last year. So every vote really does matter and can make a huge difference when it comes to the decisions we make up here. So whoever you're supporting, be sure to exercise that right. And then just also, there are a couple candidate forums in case anybody is interested in watching those. There's one on Thursday at OU hosted by Nondoc. And then next Monday, on the third, there is a Chamber of Commerce forum for City Council and mayoral candidates from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Commerce Building. So lots of opportunities for everybody in Norman to know who all the candidates are, to know when the voting days are. And so I strongly encourage you all to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember?
I would just like to reiterate and say thank you to Dr. Henderson and his family for all of the progress we've been able to make in Norman. And it's always a great honor to get to hear him speak, and I cherish that moment tonight. So no further announcements.
Councilmember?
No announcements this week. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Yes. Good evening, Ward Four and city of Norman. I would like to echo the appreciation for Dr. Henderson's inspiring words. Our Norman should be a city of love, respect, and acceptance. Next month, on Saturday, February 22nd, from 9:00 to 11:00, in the Norman Development Center, 225 North Webster Avenue, we have the first of the Ward Four quarterly meetings. Topics next month will include the power of an organized neighborhood, municipal disaster preparedness, budget updates, and a feedback session, and other relevant news. And then on Thursday, February 6th, from 3:30 to 6:00 PM at The Well, 210 James Garner Avenue, CCFI is offering free coats to kids ages, oh, kids up to 18. Coats range in size from toddler to adult 2X and are available on a first come, first served basis. Children are not required to be in attendance. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ward Three in Norman, Oklahoma. I hope this evening finds you all well. Just, you know, to reiterate the early voting dates, next Thursday or this Thursday and Friday, and sorry about that, it's been a long day for me, February 6th and 7th is the early voting dates from 8:00 to 5:00. And just mark, sure to mark your calendar if you don't get out to vote early. The voting date is February 11th for Wards One, Three, Five, Seven, and Mayor. That is all I have for this evening. So those of you here with us and watching online, thank you for being here.
Councilmember? No announcements. Thank you. Councilmember?
Just a few real quick announcements. As has been mentioned, we do have elections coming up. Wards One, Three, Five, and Seven, we had a forum last night here. It was put on by the Legal Women Voters. I thought it was very informational. It gave everybody a great chance to see the candidates. You can go and watch that on Facebook on the Norman League of Women Voters site. And again, if you missed that, we have another one coming up on Monday, next week, at the Chamber of Commerce Building. Parks and Rec has all kinds of amazing things going on. On the first, we have the Daddy Daughter Dance. It is the second largest daddy-daughter dance in the country. We sold over 4,000 tickets this year. So Parks and Rec, keep it up. You guys are doing amazing things. All kinds of, all of our spring sports signups are going on right now. So softball, baseball, volleyball, soccer, if you're interested. I think most of them are still in the early bird, so you can save a couple of dollars. So definitely check that out right now. And the mayor may want to touch this a little bit more, but I found out that when we had the bad weather last week, OU had to cancel a volleyball state final Special Olympics event. Well, luckily, our YFAC was able to open up. We got some city employees to go out there. I'm not sure what the city employees did, but I know the mayor awarded them a couple of challenge rings or, so very, what the YFAC's doing, what our Parks Department is doing for youth sports and just all sports is amazing things. So definitely reach out and support them. If you'd like our brand new Parks and Rec calendar, they're available over in the Parks and Rec Department. I think you're going to try to get some up here. So stop by and grab you a calendar so you know what's going on. And let's see, the last thing, want to give a shout out to Mr. Mattingly in our Waters Department. As most of y'all know, we recently switched our water meters to a digital reader. So we don't have to go out, have people go out and check the meters anymore. It automatically sends in your bill, but it also monitors your water flow. We got about 10% of those done. So out of the 42,000 that are being installed, we've got about 4,300 of them up and running. My best friend, I saw, I saw it on his the other day. It's pretty neat. Here, as soon as that's fully implemented, what that's going to allow you to do, you're going to be able to download an app on your phone, you're going to be able to set limits on, you know, I don't want to spend over $100. Or you'll get warnings when you're getting close to that $100 when you're watermarked. If you have a leak, something that you'll never know because it's underground, you'll be able to see instantaneously. So as far as conserving water and looking out for our residents, I think that was an amazing investment and can't wait to see when it's fully implemented. But yeah, I think that's it. So thanks for coming on.
And to Dr. Henderson's gone, obviously, but I join in that. It's wonderful to have him and have people that have learned from him be part of our city to help us do things and to brag on Jason and the Parks and Rec's department. What they, what that group did at the YFAC was these, this championship couldn't go on. They came in of their own time, made sure it happened, made sure everything happened, this Special Olympics stuff. And so it's important to those kids to be able to compete and do the things that they can do and have a good time doing it. These guys jumped through hoops, made it happen. Everybody had a good time. Everybody goes home with their little medals and the things that they get and all the cool stuff. And that's very much appreciated. And that's, it's not the exception with city workers. There's all the time, the people that work for the city are trying to do stuff to keep everything going as smoothly as possible. And sometimes it's hard. But thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council by unanimous consent can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Item Two through Item Seventeen be placed on the Consent Docket. I need a motion to place Items Two through Seventeen on the Consent Docket.
Second.
I have a motion and second. The motion and second on the floor is to place Items Two through Seventeen on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to place Items Two through Seventeen on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Second.
I have a motion. I'd like to recognize Mr. Andy Rieger. He was here. There he is. Chair in Norman Forward Citizens Financial Oversight Board to make a brief presentation on their
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Andy Rieger, 1025 Whispering Pines. I'm here tonight as chairman of the Norman Forward Citizens Financial Oversight Board. I've been on the board since the sales tax was approved in 2015. And I became chairman when Dr. Bill Nations decided he'd had enough fun any former mayor could have. So I don't think any of our other members are on the committee, but they include Eric Paulson, Linda Price, Alva Brockus, Cindy Rogers, Zach Simpson, Misty Grantham, Sadie Herrera, Orlana, and Andy Shear. And Councilmember Montoya is a former member there. And we have one opening on the, one of the members has stepped, moved to Oklahoma City, so we have one opening on the board. So in your packet tonight is our board's annual report. And there's a brief PowerPoint highlighting some of the major accomplishments of Norman Ford's completed projects. Okay. As I said, these are the nine members of our committee. We've had some turnover, but not too much over the years. This is the Norman Forward Sales and Use Tax Revenue. We rebalanced and reestimated after a few years. We raised the use tax that we thought we'd get, and we lowered the sales tax amount that we thought we would receive. We paid ADG 3.7 million to include progress reports to our board and to provide project management services for the construction projects. One of our first successes was the Westwood Family Aquatic Center. Original budget was $12 million. It came in a little under, 11.676 billion dollars. Three library, or the two libraries we built, Norman Public Library Central, which came in about $4 million under budget, Norman Library East, a little bit under budget also. Westwood Tennis Center, the original budget was $1 million. It actually cost 1.8 million. That had to do with installing air conditioning after the fact. Not sure how we overlooked that. Public art installations, we've spent a little over a million dollars on public art on the projects that we've completed. Andrews Park, original budget was 1.5 billion, final cost just under that. Reeves Park and community sports facilities, original budget was 12.5, came in just a little bit under of that. Ruby Grant Park, Phase One, budget 6.1 million, 5 million, final cost six, just under that. Community sports parks, adult football, Reeves Park, adult softball, we had 1.2 million of the budget transferred to each facility to develop these sports fields. Griffin Soccer Complex, budget 11 million, final cost 12.8 million. Young Family Athletic Center, this is a combination of several different funds. Original budget was 22.5 million, final cost 48 million. That includes property from UNP, Young Family Foundation, the hospital, and some room tax and some project transfers. Adult Wellness Center, which the original budget was zero, and that was a point of contention early on in this. We had a lot of people come to our meetings, and the final cost of the project was 14.1 million. Some of it came from the Griffin Land acquisition, some CARES funds, and some other funds they were able to cobble together. James Garner Avenue, original budget 6 million, final cost 5.5 million dollars. We're in the middle of Saxon Park development. We have an ad hoc group appointed. The design is nearing completion, so we're in discussions on that. The budget on that one is $2 million. And so this is the amortization schedule on the three tranches of debt that we've taken on. Norman Ford is a combination of debt financing and pay-as-you-go on some of the smaller projects. Again, all this information is in your packet. Future projects include the Neighborhood Park improvements, which are pay-go projects, more work on the Griffin Sutton Land acquisition, which is a regular discussion point in our meetings, development of trails, traffic improvements, the Canadian River Park on 24th. We continue to monitor the situation with the Central Library. We, like all of you, are concerned about the future there. We also look forward to the Griffin Park Wilderness Land acquisition, and some people are already looking forward to a Norman Ford Two to build on some of the successes that we've had on Norman Ford One. So I'm happy to answer any questions. You have your packet. You have our report in the packet. We're happy to continue this great committee.
Any questions from council?
Yes, sir.
So most of the, more than half the projects look like they came in under budget throughout the whole program, which I think is generally a good thing. But we may have some concerns now that projects coming under budget, does that mean there's going to be a problem with it after it's built? But But it's one of the things I've kind of bragged about Norman Ford, though, is that most of the projects have come in under budget, and I think that's generally viewed as a good thing. Did this, did the, the Griff, or not Griffin, the James Garner Boulevard project, did that budget, did that include federal funding that was received for that?
Yes, it's a combination of city and federal funds.
Okay. Just wanted to, wasn't sure if that was also part of that number, so, okay. And then there's been discussion, too, about, you know, future phases of Reeves Park, for example, of all the ball, all the ballfields eventually getting redone and playground improvements and things like that. Would that be envisioned to be part of the next Norman Ford or just continuation of?
I think it's probably Norman Ford II. When the Reeves Park plan came up, there were lots of other things that we had to, things that we had to cut out of that project to make it fit within our budget. And we, we cut the ones that we thought we could do down the line with another project.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm eagerly waiting until we have a Norman Ford II proposal so that we can see what new things we can do to improve the quality of life here in Norman. I think it's going to be exciting, and you guys have done an excellent job not only tracking the money, but tracking the projects and getting things done that couldn't be done like the all.
Thank you. It's been a great experience to watch. So you know, I like to ride my bike around town. I ride on Saturdays and Sundays, and I go to Reeves Park and look at all the kids and people from out of town there, and then I go to Griffin Park and look at all the people that are there, and I'm thinking, where were these people before? They were in other cities, and now they're here in Norman because of the projects we've we've done.
Well, hopefully we'll be able to put a miracle field in there and have kids that have disabilities be able to play ball right alongside the able kids, so.
That's one of the plans. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, sir.
Just note was the interest part, and I know you and I had a brief conversation about it the other day, but like when thinking about Norman Ford II, and you mentioned that some of these projects have been pay-go.
Right.
But when we're talking about Norman Ford II, I think we really need to think about pay-go versus bond financing upfront because we have 11.5 million, 8.3 million, and 3.6 million in interest, all those combined. So, you know, almost $25 million in interest that we're paying in order to get these projects done faster. You know, you, people vote on something, you want it to get done as fast as possible so you can start using it, but there is a pretty heavy cost that comes with debt financing projects upfront, so it's just something we might think about. We could imagine if we had 25 more million dollars to do more projects with, that'd be pretty neat, so something for us to think about in the future.
It's, it was a council even before you, Stephen, that decided that they wanted to get the projects done quickly. We're not like Oklahoma City where they, the MAPS, where they have that kind of funding to do, pay as you go on their projects. So it's a decision that needs to be made at some point, but yes, I think it's a good discussion to have.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 18, consideration of awarding, acceptance, approval, rejection, amendment, and/or postponement of PP 2425-5, preliminary plat for 12th Avenue Northwest Industrial, generally located on the west side of 12th Avenue Northwest, approximately one-half mile north of Rock Creek Road. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the preliminary plat.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Is there a representative from the applicant here?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jason Spencer with Blue and Associates here on behalf of the applicant. So before you, the preliminary plat for 12th Avenue Northwest Industrial, as you said, it's located on the west side of 12th Avenue Northwest, just a little bit north of Rock Creek. And this will consist of three lots on 30 acres. It's zoned I-2 heavy industrial, uses planned for it or light industrial uses on two of the lots and a church use on the other lot. The preliminary plat includes improvements such as extending a public street into the addition. Public water and public sewer will be extended to serve the site. It meets the requirements of the I-2 zoning, meets city subdivision regs. Planning Commission and staff have both recommended approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Yes, sir.
Just, could you talk a little bit about the stormwater management on the property? There, I know there is a creek that runs through it.
Sure.
Currently, and so if you just might talk about how this development will handle that in its current form.
Absolutely. There's quite a little bit of drainage comes in, some of it from the west over by the railroad tracks comes across, and then you've also got water coming from the east across 12th Avenue Northwest. Those both converge on the very north part of this property, so we'll be accepting the water where it comes on to us and conveying it. And the individual lots will have detention ponds that'll discharge into those. Now, there's also a water quality protection zone that covers those two creeks, and so we've submitted calculations and worked with staff to do averaging of that, but basically the same amount of water quality protection zone that's on the site now is what we're providing, and so it'll surround those creeks. And they'll generally, the western creek and north part, it's where they combine, will be left natural. There's not much we can do with that.
So you're not, you're not altering the existing creek path or make, do anything like that?
No, on the, the east side where it comes on to us from under 12th Avenue, it drains from Trail Woods Pond under the road and then comes on to us, we will straighten a piece of that out with a little earthen channel and then put it back where, where it drains to today before it leaves our property.
Okay. And then are there any planned improvements as part of this development on 12th Avenue? Or will you be paying into the recoupment fund?
So it's our understanding that there's a project in place for 12th Avenue Northwest, and so as what's in the staff report, it's been recommended that we're paying the fee in lieu of the widening improvements on that, and so we're in agreement with doing that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Once public comments have concluded, council may choose to answer your questions. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody registered for this item?
Yes, sir. We'll start with Diana Hutzel.
Good evening, Diana Hutzel, Ward five. This project should expand Norman's light industrial base and will do so without turning the area into an industrial eyesore. The project's 25 industrial buildings will also contribute to Norman's tax revenues once those buildings are up and running. The success of this project is important, especially given the concerning financial discussions held between council and the finance director and city manager during the finance committee meeting on the 16th of January. Although discussions were difficult to follow during that meeting, given the public didn't have access to the documents, it was still possible to understand and emphasize the importance of improving projects like this for the city of Norman. Last year, the finance department warned Norman council that we would be in the red within five years. On January 16th, you were warned that we're now down to three. Freedom Farms project is currently urgently needed, but it won't alone fix the problem. At the start of the last fiscal year, Norman had an excess of 13.4 million in operational reserves. By the beginning of this fiscal year, that balance had dropped by 2.8 million, leaving only 10.6 million. Council has already stated its intent to use at least 6 million of that to purchase Griffin and Sutton Wilderness properties. Norman's financial outlook is beyond alarming to me. This fiscal year, Norman, the city of Norman is projected to spend 5 million more than it will receive in tax revenues. All future forecast years, deficit spending greater than 5 million per year, deficit spending, spending in excess of revenue. Projections for next FY, 5.5 million spending in deficit spending, 6.2 million in '27, 7.8 in FY '28, 10 million in FY '29, and 12 million in deficit funding for the city of Norman in FY '30. How can anyone hearing those numbers not think that Norman is in dire financial straits? A change in fiscal mindset is needed. Approval votes for general fund expenditures cannot be based upon wants and desires of the project's cost in comparison with other budget items. Expenditure approvals must be revenue-based to maintain Norman's solvency. Has council ever considered that for every $100,000 that you approve to spend from the general fund, that more than 2.4 million dollars in sales must be generated to collect enough sales tax to cover that $100,000 expenditure? A lot to think about, and even more for council to resolve in an extremely short period of time. Please approve the Freedom Farms project. It sounds like a really great project. Reassess and curb spending and start looking for other initiatives like this that will generate rapid growth to fuel Norman's tax revenues. Thank you.
Ben Plummer.
Is there any way we can see a plat of this or a map of where it is?
It's in, it's in the packet.
I don't know if one's loaded up there or not. Okay, Jason, you can click through the slides. There's one loaded for you.
Thank you, Ben.
So that's the zoning map and the location. This is the property showing basically the public street that'll be added in there. It also shows the proposed water quality protection zone layout, and is that all, that's all we've got on that one? So the southeast lot with the panhandle on it is the one that's proposed for the church, and then the other two lots will have light industrial uses, typically contractor spaces, things of that nature. So access points will be limited to the road that you see, and then the church will have one other drive on to 12th Avenue Northwest.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Dan Munson with Ward six. I like this project. I think it's a great use of the land. Looking back at the history on this property, it was agricultural, like a lot of Norman was, and then it went over to industrial, and I feel like the buildings and the church that are going up on here is, is a great use of our land. We have a lot of land, and I actually came across an article that I think you guys are going to find really interesting about the least dense cities in America, and they classify it by large, medium, and small. So in the large category, Virginia Beach is number five, Kansas City, Nashville, Jacksonville number two, Oklahoma City number one. Midsize, top five, Huntsville, Alabama, Columbus, Georgia, Chesapeake, Virginia, Augusta, Georgia, and Anchorage, Alaska. And then for small, the top five for small cities are Charleston, South Carolina, Abilene, Texas, Athens, Georgia, Columbia, South Carolina, and Norman, Oklahoma. If you categorize the large, the medium, and the small, Norman comes in number three in the country for least dense populated city in America. Thank you.
That's it. Are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Oh. Councilmember Hinkle.
I need to ask for a motion to abstain from this vote for a potential conflict of interest.
I can't make the motion, but would somebody make the motion?
A motion to abstain.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We need to vote on that. Councilmembers, there's a motion to abstain for Councilmember Hinkle to abstain from this motion. You may cast your vote.
It passes unanimously.
For Public Works staff about 12th Avenue, real quick. I do recall 12th Avenue from Rock Creek to Tecumseh as being one of the proposed projects in the 2019 bond, but I moved from the final list, though. And so is there another project we have planned or other funding that we're looking at or anything like that?
Sure. Scott Surs, Public Works. There is not a current project that's in our project plan to move forward with that. However, it is one that we're monitoring. We know it's on the, it's ready to be done, we need it, but there's a lot of work that's still to be done there. There's some issues that would need to be worked out, so I would see it being in a future bond package to be promoted. There's also been some discussion, BNSF has offered some assistance. We did some other things, but it really hasn't worked out, but at this time, it is not in the current work plan.
Okay, thank you.
Motion on the floor is to approve the preliminary plat. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
I'll vote to approve the preliminary plat. It passes unanimously with Councilmember Hinkle abstaining.
Thank you, ma'am. It's time for miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to Open Meeting Act regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up?
Ms. Mayor, we do. We'll start with Marguerite Larson. I didn't see.
I don't see her.
Okay, I didn't see her either. Trey Kirby? You good? Okay. Diana Hutzel.
We should have been born beforehand.
Good evening, Diana Hutzel, Ward five. With 2024 behind us, I'd like to share some insights from the NPD's daily arrest activity reports and compare them to 2023 and 2022. Everybody on the dais should have a sample page from one of the reports I provided to Brenda. As shown, each person listed is an arrestee, and every criminal offense is tied to a specific arrestee. All reports look like this. Anyone can access these reports on the NPD website under Crime Prevention Data. The NPD arrested, in 2022, the NPD arrested 530 homeless individuals. That number rose to 651 in 2023 and increased further to 679 last year. Of those 679 arrested, 543 had not been arrested by the NPD in 2022 or 2023. In 2022, homeless arrests accounted for 38% of all arrested offenses. In 2023, that number rose to 40%, and last year it was 44%. In 2024, homeless arrestees averaged 96% more offenses per arrest than housed arrestees. 33% of total arrests in 2022 were homeless individuals. In 2023, that number rose to 36%. Last year, it reached 39%. Last year, only 10% of housed arrestees were arrested more than once. However, 40% of homeless arrestees were arrested two or more times, with the highest being 15 arrests. Homeless crime numbers are likely higher due to evidence of crossovers. Last year, 173 individuals arrested as housed had previously been arrested as homeless in 2022, 2023, and/or 2024. These 173 individuals were responsible for 467 criminal offenses, which accounted for 16% of all housed offenses last year. 20% of offenses by homeless individuals were related to trespass compared to 5% of housed individuals. Of that 20%, 25% occurred while the arrestee was committing another offense. 4.6% of the offenses committed by the homeless individuals were violent compared to 12.4% of the offenses committed by housed individuals, higher for housed than for homeless. 36% of homeless offenses were drug or alcohol-related versus 32.3% of housed offenses. As you can see by what I've shared tonight, Norman has a significant issue with crime in general and particularly homeless crime. I think crime in Norman is exacerbated by the fact that our municipal court is not of record because our population is below 300,000. because our population is below 300,000. And if you're not familiar, courts not of record are not required to record details of trials and proceedings, making it difficult to track criminal histories and challenging to prove a defendant's repeat offending status, as well as monitor rehabilitation. It also likely increases the likelihood of recidivism, which I think many will agree we are currently experiencing in Norman. Thank you.
Ben Plummer.
So you guys had a meeting where you talked about the central Norman overlay district, the new CNZOD, and how you were going to increase the number of allowable bedrooms, possibly to five from four, and how you wanted to extend that zone north to include my neighborhood, which I don't like. But I wanted to make an exception for large families. You know, so that a large family that's building a house, you know, it's probably never going to happen, but let's say it does. They're building a house in this area. They need more than five bedrooms. They could prove it with birth certificates that they have children and so forth. And so I just, that's the language that would change that. And then I want to add, I want to throw some more ideas at you guys. I want to propose adding solar energy to a standardized allowable use in the rural agricultural district. So I don't think you have any established use permission for solar energy in I-2. And also propose a capsule overlay district where people would be able to build capsule hotels on the west side of the city, well, east of the freeway, but right up against I-35.
Okay. Well, thank you, sir. Okay.
I will share it with them tomorrow. Next, we have Richard Baxter.
Don't start my time yet. Okay. Gotta practice get better. Okay. My name is Baxter. I'm founder of nonprofit organization Racism Stinks. We're 501(c)(3) and a registered student organization at OU. We believe that community collaborations will improve race relations, and our motto is "Real, Not Woke." Joke of the evening? You ready? I'm looking at him. I can never get it. The joke of the evening? How do you stop a skunk from smelling? He just blinked. You hold your nose. Well, you hold the skunk's nose. I messed it up. Okay. But seriously, we got some serious stuff to talk about. So I believe we all can agree that some efforts for unity are imperative for our country's stability during the changes that we're making. Racism Stinks has been working on the first Norman cultural unity parade in hopes to help start the healing that we all desire. I've made it a point to partner with the Norman Police Department because incomplete information has bred distrust, which creates hostility towards officers, leading to several community issues and a less safe America. I'm extending an invitation to each and everyone who believes our society is stronger together to contact me and help represent all of Norman's beautiful cultures in a respectful and celebratory way. We can be the light of unity our country needs. Thank you. I'll work on that joke next time.
Dan Munson.
Dan Munson, Ward six. You guys probably know the Olympics are coming in 2028 to Oklahoma City, right? So that's kind of exciting. Softball. Softball's kind of a big deal. And Norman, Oklahoma, in my mind, is the capital of softball. The Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce backstopped financially the Olympics. I don't know if you know that or not. I believe we need to pitch Norman as a host city for one of the countries or two of the countries that are going to come play. The country that comes to mind for me is Japan. I think we probably have bilingual people over at OU, not only students but staff. We have Hitachi here in town, big Japanese company. We might be able to get some corporate funding on that. And then if you look at it from a strategic standpoint, Patty Gasso is constantly recruiting student athletes. It's pretty hard to recruit in Japan. But if they're in your backyard, it makes it a little easier. How I envision this is a partnership with the University of Oklahoma, possibly using Love's Field. If we can't use that, we have plenty of softball fields that the city owns. The reason I'm coming here to talk about it is because I think we need to allocate funds from the hotel tax revenue specifically for the Olympics in this fiscal year. I'd like to see $150,000 allocated this fiscal year from the hotel tax fund to an Olympic committee. We'll have to do the same thing over the next two fiscal years if we can get a country to come join us here in Norman. You think about Oklahoma City. Obviously, they have the Devon Park up there. But there's only one team that's going to be able to practice at a time. So I think that this could relieve some of the pressure. We could use our transit resources to haul people to and from the hotel to softball fields in Norman and also Oklahoma City. It appears that we're behind in revenue. New subject. And the budget season is just around the corner. So as councilpeople, we really need to be judicious in what we're improving. I believe that we're not going to keep up with revenue and the inflation for this year. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Floyd Carroll.
Ward four. And I was born and raised in this state. My kids has been taken from me. And I was charged, they were screwed up, and I was charged for it. But they came back when they was a little older, and I tried to help them out. And they're a little bit, these people that are broken, it's a little hard to help them out. Now, two of them's dead, and one of my grandkids. But also, they're doing a good job at managing the 600 block of Main Street over there. Because that's where I've been at for 20 years. And I haven't heard no gunshots in like a month. Yeah, my grandkids has actually went out on the sidewalk and stood there a few times. Now, they want to ride their bicycles. That's a little bit different than it's been in the last few years. So during the time my kids were dying of COVID, I didn't know you guys was interested in jail because I spent a little bit of time over there for a couple of years. And, you know, I don't know if you know it, but them young people over there that run that jail on Franklin, they really didn't deserve some of that stuff that they was put through over there and maybe still be put through it. I haven't been to jail in a while. But I know it's not a mental institution over there. And they're also short-staffed. I don't know if you know that or not. So, you know, I don't know what to do about that. You guys are, somebody's in control of that other than me. But I just, I learned a lot of stuff while I was over there. And there's a lot of those people over there that are really broken. I don't know how to fix that either. But it runs into distrusting the government. And if you look at some of their lives and look at some of my life, like, I think that's where that comes from, distrusting the government. So we had a problem over there for a while with a guy that, you know, he made something that this child hung herself on. And then he set Monica's car on fire behind 6:15 the same day. And it took us almost a year to get rid of him. You know, even though he was setting a fire in his front yard every day, two blocks from the fire department. And you don't have no problem putting me in jail, but we couldn't figure out what to do about that. So I don't think it's really a law problem. I think it's like a perversion of law. You know, you can pick this law to do something about, but you can't, you don't do nothing about that one. And I just wanted to let you know that you're doing a good job over there because those kids grew up on that sidewalk. And I like to see kids going around that neighborhood there. Thank you.
Evan Dunn.
Thank you, everyone. You're all so rare. My name is Evan Dunn. I live at 1400 Garfield Avenue in Ward seven. And, oh heavens. I do have a couple announcements. This Saturday from nine to one, the farmer's market will be held. I won't be there with you thrones. However, we do have some Kraft kombucha from Smiley Green Farms, some local meat and eggs from Grounded Living Homestead, some paleo bars from Nut and Pip. And Sour Dough Kitchen will be making some of the best breads that you'll ever find in Norman. You got to get there pretty quickly, though, because they do sell out for, in a fairly short amount of time. So do it for yourself. Do it for yourself and do it for these enterprising, creative people who are, you know, at the tip of the sword in so many ways. Great courses. It's been blowing my mind still. I watched this class on epigenetics. Incredible. Everybody fasting a little bit? One day a month? It's all we need. You know, give your pancreas a rest. Get that glycogen out of the warehouse and the liver. Posture and breath classes. I'm working on some new material, some new curricula. They're coming. And I have something, you know, this idea about trusting government, appreciating government. I think that if we use some type of a lottery, I got this off of Amazon for like five bucks. And if we could give everybody, you know, maybe use the registration numbers on the voter IDs. So you shake it up, and then you close it. And then you open it. And you see there's those little balls at the bottom? So you say, all right, number, registration number 12525932, come on up. And you give them, you give them a wood burning stove or a greenhouse or give them a sleep study, something that they will look at and say, oh, my city's doing something good for me. Right? And I've got a bookmark here from Monticello. It's just Jefferson's Ten Rules. I'll give you a couple. Never put off until tomorrow what you can do today. And never trouble yourself for what.
Adjourn, and I'll be out with you. Counsel, we are adjourned.
Dan, did you hear the mayor? The mayor's coming to talk to you.